I hate going through this.
I said, yeah, if I could go to the telephone office or something, can I just say, or you want to go on your read? I said, yeah, tell me, yeah, go to the telephone office, they come and tell them all about it.
Okay, what do we read? What did it say? Okay, we got our monthly meeting together and the forty-five is a private invitation to make that good.
Dear Father, we watch over this council as they make decisions in the town of Maryville and surrounding areas. Heavenly Father, keep under your watch our employees, our police departments, and the citizens of Maryville. In your name we pray, amen.
My plea is that you should be the light of the United States of America and a free government for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, would there be an ad hoc decision now?
Um, yeah, I have one, uh, more statement, I guess. I want to put on record that I want to be moved to the commission because since I've been in office, there's been five trailers that I know of and I've yet to be asked yay or nay, is this one okay to be moved in? They've all been moved in purpose to ease and so I just want to make sure that my name is not connected with any of those. Um, because I was understood that that was my job and since I haven't done my job, uh, I don't think my name should be associated with it. Can you just put Mayor Eads beside it since you've made all those decisions? You can add that to the list of these.
Now, if you want my argument, you did pay a part of the other task, can I use that technical word?
No, sir. I got technical work on one trailer, but it ordered a big move in.
There's been a couple of them that I don't even know about.
Well, I mean, and that's, that's fine. I just want to say there's one sudden big move in that I probably wouldn't approve and so I just want to make sure.
Okay. All right, we'll make that number six.
Thank you.
Uh, Robinson, request will be removed. Over the phone, yes. Okay, I have a motion for that.
Do you want us to go on that side?
Well, I can, but I just want to do that one. Okay. I've got, uh, two to add to it. Would there be any more to be added?
You said that's six, what's five?
He's got two.
Oh.
Right, public, uh, just place.
Okay.
I'll get to that in just a minute. Okay, uh.
I've got three, so just a minute.
So he's a change in this stuff, because we got an ad hoc decision.
Well, I'm trying to write a name.
Well, I'm going, I said I'd give it to him, just hold on. Uh, we have one, Adam, Mr. Rusty Weibson, he likes to speak tonight, and that'll be number one. Number two, Chief Thompson would like to speak to the board members tonight, that'd be number two. And then number six is, uh, Mr. Robinson's request to be removed from the public office commissioner. Do I have a motion for those three?
Uh, excuse me, I'd like to speak also tonight.
We have public participation now.
Okay, is it? Okay.
You're a good chance.
I am.
Do I have a motion for those three?
Yes.
Okay, now back to, uh.
Who said?
Same. All the way.
Uh.
Okay, now, weigh this file tonight, Mr. Rusty is number one, uh, Chief Thompson is number two, Halloween is number three, public ride along is number four, uh, five is Mr. Robinson's, and six is public participation. Number one, Mr. Rusty, number two, Chief Thompson, number three, Halloween, four is late ride along, number five, Mr. Robinson's request, and number six, public participation. Okay. Now, I have approval for the minutes of the day for the regular meeting on August the 12th, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion, second.
I want a favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of financials play, Mr. Perry, Maryville versus Public, August two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion for that?
You're going to have a copy.
Yes, yeah. I really make that just a little bit, actually. I would throw that before.
Now, that, before, thank you. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I was thinking earlier.
That's right, give them the, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking earlier, you look at it. Yeah, I make a motion, I would go before.
Now, second.
Second.
All the way.
Uh.
Okay. Under, uh, mayor's comments, uh, we have a big election coming up here on October 12th and we're juggling our own bill. Uh, early voting will start September the twenty-eighth and go through October the fifth, the time for eight-thirty in the morning to six P.M. every day. That's September twenty-eighth through October the fif- the fifth. Okay?
Eight-thirty in the morning.
Uh, six P.M., eight-thirty A.M., six P.M. September twenty-eighth through October fifth. Uh, bingo at the, uh, Methodist Church, the next one will be September, wait a minute. That was, that was two gives on the eighteen, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
It'd be next Monday.
Uh, well, we have bingo eighteen, is that right?
That's a sixteen, what are we doing?
It's a sixteen, and then October seventh and October forty-first, is that right? Okay. September sixteenth, October seventh, and forty-first, at nine A.M. at the, uh, Methodist Church in Perry Street. Okay, and we have two gives, that's the eighteen.
That's it.
Okay. At four-thirty at the Methodist Church, real good program. We have Boar Parish Fair just be starting up October the first, and I believe they have Seniors Day on Thursday, so that'll be, uh, October the third. Okay. September the fifteenth through the eighteenth, uh, First Baptist Church here in Maryville will be having a revival. That'll start seven P.M. in the evening time, except for Sunday be at five P.M. Sunday at five, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, seven P.M. Okay, Maryville has a home football game played in Delhite, and I think it's seven o'clock this Friday. Okay. Now, we're back under old business, uh, Weaver Street, and I'll turn this back over to the board.
Bob, we're asking, um, I had talked to Miss Laura a little bit about, you know, what we had come up with and how she felt about it, and I guess I was kind of letting her change, you know, what she, what I had especially, what we talked about.
Uh, I wanted to make sure that I was clear too. Um, from what I understand, the options were to rename.
The road.
Road, the whole road to Patton.
No, no, no. Just put, we'd rename the road, like North and Zone Weaver, something to that effect, but, or we could just have your house, leave your number there, but you'd be at Patton Street instead of Weaver, because your house actually faces Patton.
Yes, that's.
So that's why, I don't, I never understood why they.
I don't want to change my address, and my concern too, if we link it up to Patton with nine-one-one, if I were, have like a marchet seat.
It would automatically.
Can it be linked?
Oh, it would automatically be changed.
Okay.
It, that's, because she come, she will come out, she'll talk to you about it, you know, and, uh, they just make sure that everything on your house is the same, you know, color. That's if you change it out of there. That's if you want to change it to Patton.
No, I don't want it to be Weaver, because I don't want to go to change it.
Well, if we leave it Weaver, then, you know.
Okay, so on the nine-one-one, it still show up as Weaver? Okay.
Yes, yeah, I haven't done, no, we haven't done anything like that. That's why I'm just.
I don't want dog food having to change.
Yeah, it's a lot of.
All the things that I may have been done, because I'm dealing with my mother-in-law, so trying to straighten that out, so I don't want it changed, that's my opinion.
What's the board on this?
This will make a motion just to leave it as Weaver. Our only other thing is, do we want to call it east and west, of which we had discussed first, which would motivate terrorists, still Weaver, but if black people even know it's on the east and west side, so that's, that's what you, you need to discuss.
Really? I would have to change my dress.
But she would.
Still not fixing her problem.
You would still have to change, because if you change the name of the road, if you go east or west, then it would be, what's your number on there?
Seven oh two.
Seven oh two, you'd be on the west side, and you'd have to change it, seven oh two West Weaver Street, you have to change everything, everybody on that street would have to change it.
Well, without anything needed?
It would totally affect that hurt.
Well, how about my mother?
Yeah, but if you change, if you're going to change the names of the road, it affects everybody on that road.
No, I know what you're saying.
But I think.
But she's the only address that we change.
No, Mr. Paterson. Everybody would change it. And everybody that's listed as Weaver Street would change, even on the east side. So do I, Mr. Paterson's and how to change it and. It's, uh, I can't remember how many houses, but, um, well, the Nigga's run. I don't think we should change the road name without any of their permission, that's how I feel about it, because that's a lot of stuff, I mean, y'all have all lived there a long time, and everybody has a lot of, you know, property to taxes, everything is in their vehicles, so.
And the, my, the house next door to us, where my mother-in-law live, my, um, sister-in-law now owns that, and she's moving to Houston, so I'm not sure what's going to happen to her home. I don't know if she's going to sell it or rent it or what, so right now we're sort of trying to help guide her since she's finished.
I change my home, sure, I make a motion with it as Weaver as is.
What was the comment? Did everybody else help you? No, I think she's the one that it affects the most, and so, um.
I can't imagine anybody else would go put it.
I think you know it every time. I just don't see anybody.
Because I think some people have their medicines and everything.
Well, you think, anything you have to do with your address, it has to change.
You see, like, right now, we've got my mother-in-law's mail changed to ours.
To come to yours. I see you have to go through all that, and that's, that's.
I even had to get my father-in-law's address changed, even though he's been there a long time, because something came to the mail to him, and they said, you got to come up here and fill this out, and so they said, where was the present delivered? And I said, I don't know, the person maybe took nowhere.
Have y'all had, have you had any issues lately?
With the mail?
Well, with anything, you know, have you had to call ambulance or anybody?
Oh, yeah, all the home health people that came for my cousin, everybody went the wrong way. Even, uh, someone luckily that I saw with something too, went the wrong way, and she goes to First Baptist Church, she says, I know where that is, over there, she came down the wrong way, and so, you know, trying to redirect everybody, I had to go back to the end of the road, tell her how to go around, and then there was somebody else that was not familiar with the area, but, uh, was, was with not a medical program, but with someone else, and my son was with me, and he rode around with them and sent, took them around, but with all the.
Were you giving them my folks' cell phone number? Why should she have to do that, though? But she was. But I, I mean, I would mind telling people.
But even when I explained it to them, the agencies travel all over, you know, like.
They're not my community.
Yeah, and they're not from here, so when I say, don't turn here, come around.
They're not using clothes in the little road.
No, they're like, because I, I mentioned, my GPS says I'm at your house, but, uh, I can't get into your house.
See, we had that problem twice over the weekend, trying to get to, uh, a place. Lady was, uh, unconscious, and, and, uh, what's it called, uh?
Not responding.
Or, the first one we got called, uh.
What one?
That, uh, diabetic coma, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, the GPS took me one way, and I had to turn around and come back around, and then, uh, they had one yesterday, that didn't come across nine-one-one. Maryville PD got dispatched out to it, and the GPS took them the wrong way. We had it twice this weekend.
Where did I vote? What was it taking?
It was taking us to the other side of Weaver Street over there.
Was it, was it in Patton, or was it?
Yeah, it was on Patton, but it's, the address or something is listed as Weaver, so when you go that way, the, the GPS is showing, you, it's, you got to turn around and come back and hit one ten and go down Weaver here, and then to Patton.
Yeah. Well, when we get through here, I want to ask you, so I'm looking at it, see how it came in and whose house it is.
I'm sure it's you.
Well, let's, I make a motion, we are not renaming, to not rename the street, and leave as is.
I second.
All the way.
Aye.
Okay, we'll leave right along there. Okay, uh, number one, I'm David, Mr. Rusty, you got the floor, sir.
Okay, thank y'all for having me tonight. Uh, I'm Rusty Weibson, uh, running for reelection to the police area, uh, running on my record, walked up over a hundred miles of road, five miles in the city of the town of Maryville. I've always had a good working relationship with the mayor through the years and the city councils, and, uh, uh, our district is debt-free, we don't owe any money. I've been president of the jury three different times, so, uh, I'm just here to solicit your vote, and, and, uh, although I've always helped the town of Maryville with all the needs, with your election of odor barriers and drainage, in fact, we've got one coming up tomorrow night with a jury, uh, Trandall, who's a cop or something, or whatever, and, uh, so we'll vote on that tomorrow night, get a more recording to get that one done for y'all, but we're teamed together, so let's work together. I appreciate y'all having me, and any way y'all get me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, tomorrow night in your meeting, there's, uh, if I can get the size covered from Mr. Gary, they will purchase the cover. Okay. 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 Number two is, uh, Chief Thompson.
As y'all know, since we've been working up there, not being elected, and the people I've got working with me now has not got any money whatsoever to help them out, things is going higher, and they have done a lot for this community to try to get this thing in a better shape, so if there is any possible way that y'all would give them just some kind of a raise, it would help them out a lot, because they are bringing in tickets on top of tickets.
Now, who are you going to?
Just Josh and Kelly, that's the only two that have been here, the other two are fresh, and I'm not putting them on the list for anything right now, they got to be here a while, but these two officers are here well-seasoned, they know their business, and if y'all would do something for them, like I said, anything would help them out, and I would appreciate and they'd love you to do it for them.
Do they give a salary now?
Yeah, but it's way below what everybody else is getting.
Are they salaried or aloned?
I'm on salary, they on hourly.
They're hourly, yeah.
They're not on salaries?
I mean, hourly?
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was making thirteen dollars an hour.
Hours for hourly and rest of salary.
Robert, wasn't that how they settled the vehicles home?
Huh?
Isn't that how they started letting them take the vehicles home and leave us running?
Well, that helps them out too, but if us hadn't put gas in their vehicles, I wouldn't have no people here at all.
But if they weren't there for.
Or they couldn't make it. I got one officer, he pays him paying all his bills for the two weeks, he said he's lucky, he has fifty dollars to live off of the next pay.
Which is better than even not see it for him.
Is that a particular reason why we have problems keeping?
That's, goes along with it a lot. Matter of fact, one of my reserve, one of the ones I just got from the cabin, when he gets his year up, he's already found by lease.
They didn't? So they settled it? Because they've always done.
I think we need to up that.
Huh?
I think we need to up that. If we don't pay for them to go to the cabin, they already said to be here three years.
Well, I can see two. I can see two.
It used to make it.
Okay, Olson.
I don't know when he got changed to one, it's been like ever since I've been here.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah.
But it used to make it when it first.
Yeah, I can go along with that.
I'd like to see what it is. Yeah, that's what. They don't know what it is. They don't, uh. I just. Mayor Tom, uh, Chief Thompson, he's going to give us the, their pay until we can see what we can do.
Well, I know this, this past month, they, uh, wrote a hundred seventy tickets, and it comes up to fifty-eight thousand dollars. That's a thirty.
What they get paid? Yeah, they're paid.
They're paid.
We're not doubting it. We know they want. Yeah, yeah.
We just, we want to make sure, we can see what we, make sure we can, you know, what we can give.
I think they, uh, broke our own salary down at one time, I said, are they making tips, they're very little, a thirteen dollars an hour.
That's what you said. I didn't know that, they, I, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at that as, that's the best than what I expect.
Well, that's what I, that's what we get now.
Five hundred dollars.
Oh, I know, I think it's, but I bet that town, they didn't come out of town's money.
We got good, good taxes.
State.
The state wants it.
What they get from the state to town has nothing to do with it.
We got to pay the taxes, huh?
Y'all pay the taxes on it?
Mm-hmm. And that's still.
Well, how much?
I mean, that's fine.
Thirteen dollars an hour, true enough, they doing this job to help people out, but thirteen dollars an hour, not that much, because you're out in the line.
No, sure, that's pretty sure, no. That's, I've told you before.
They doing this job because somebody has to do the job. We just arrested two this morning on drug deals right here in town, trying to get that ass out of here.
Well, I told you before that I felt like saying.
It's basically, and I want to, I certainly, it's just. That's like the Walmart. They're playing with you.
No, I don't.
They not pay free driving.
I don't understand what this is, now, you think they're on budget, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, now, why do you have to go through the board over here in order to give your people a raise?
Because they control my budget, even though we bring the money in too, they still control my budget.
That's the law, it's in that area.
That sounds like some of them politicians up in Washington.
Well, I mean, I tend to think that's good, because, you know, you don't want one person saying nothing, it's true, Mayor Tom, uh, Chief Thompson, you don't want one person saying, oh, you, you eighteen, and, you know.
No.
But, um, I think your input is, should be a lot, you know, and, and, fine, there have been, y'all have seen it on the news, there are people that abuse it. That have been, you.
Really, you mean, I'm not going to put my foot in that damn news.
Well, I think, uh, Josh and Kelly have been, I mean, because they, Josh has been here, what, two?
Ever since Mayo, was that two years?
No, no, it's during February.
Just a year? Four times?
Just a year.
But he's been, he was.
He's been here four years.
He's been here full-time.
Not a year, no. He, if you're my, I said, he's been here full-time, one year in February.
It's, well, I've been longer than since Mayo left here. Has Mayo left in two thousand eighteen?
No, they just got one week's vacation this year.
It was Mayo left in two thousand eighteen, what, or the end of two thousand seventeen?
No, it was.
January.
I think January, like, we're in January.
But the day we hired him, oh, he was already full-time right then.
Well, I can say, just, um, uh, this area, uh, that the, you know, Police Department Director, the Sheriff's Office, just those two agencies, that's way less.
That mean, call.
And their seal of service and have benefits, you know, because. Well, the city police, yes, I guess.
Yeah, they have a lot of money to work with.
Well, and the thing is, how much can your budget afford to give you?
That's, that's the reason I say, y'all make the conclusion on that, whatever they can get, they not going to cry, because these two boys are desperate.
Well, I don't want to.
And I don't want to lose either one of those two whatsoever.
I can't imagine any of them would want thirteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, that's all, they want that.
They think, no, no, no.
Walmart did. I can say. May I ask a question, or is that out?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Let's just say you give them two dollars an hour, does that mean that the next one that comes in starts to guarantee that salary, or can you go back to whatever?
I don't know.
No, that's true.
Well, you even, we could do it this way, the new ones would come in, leave it at thirteen, like it is now for everybody, and after they show their seven, a year or two, ten, but not just right off jump street, you getting X money for doing what this is.
Well, I have another question. I know, it was an organization at one time that, that, you know, they fell in love with the person, and they kept hoping it, well, then, when the next person came in, they said, no, 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 you're not going back now to that, you look at this, and it was upheld, and that's why I was asking, I just wanted.
Yeah, that, that'd be the only way to do that, because they hadn't showed their self or anything else to benefit the race.
I just have a few questions. Because Kelly's even been here.
Kelly got here maybe two, two months after.
It's been here a year. Um, I know I've looked at y'all's calls and procedures, but I don't remember off the top of my head. Do y'all have a section that has salary in there? It would probably be a good idea to put that in, that way when you do hire someone.
Yeah, they start off dead.
That's not starting out, it's set in stone, that's what they start out at. Do y'all do yearly, um, employee reviews? Do you?
Well, last year we don't, because we give that award and stuff for it, so.
Because that could be something that comes along with that, is you could actually make you a pay scale, and I'm just throwing this out there, that after a year, you know, you say you get an increase fifty dollars a month, a hundred dollars, whatever your budget can handle, based on their performance, their employee evaluations.
But, since your employee target is set, doesn't that mean they're like, they're money.
That's true too. We have, I'm looking at something else on that too, but that's true. What you have, budgets a set of years.
The first you're set.
So if you gave them raises, how much it went for the year, then he would have to have the money taken from somewhere else. How could?
Well, just this past month, we brought in fifty-eight, well, we broke these, it totaled over fifty-eight thousand dollars.
That's not a fix in the saying, you don't know from month to month.
No.
And tickets he's going to get.
Getting told. It can go up further than that, or it can go way down.
And you also don't know how much you're gonna collect either, 'cause you wouldn't collect your receipt of ticket every single month. But still, I mean, if you.
I think there's about twelve thousand dollars brought in last week, that I know of.
So, how is the tickets added to the budget, and you just kinda estimate?
It's called an estimate.
What you have to do is you take the previous year, you take the past three years, and you build a comparison.
And then you estimate based on your past.
That's what you think it's gonna be.
So, just, do you, over the past three years, has tickets been up, that's been paid, or it stayed kinda the same?
Basically, it has stayed basically the same.
The what?
The rate for your side pay.
Not what you're adding, what's been added. See, we pay, when you do the budget, you can't base it off of, you fronted fifty-eight thousand dollars, 'cause you don't know if they're gonna get that fifty-eight thousand off. So, you have to actually base your budget off what your actual numbers are, and you have to do it, compare the past three years, and then you estimate from looking at that, and what you're projecting to collect.
Uh, the last two years, I know we brought in way more than anybody else ever brought in.
Almost, there are only one chief that Hallie Gordon needs one physically here, and you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
None Gordon?
They brought, I think, when it got close to three hundred thousand. Everybody else after that usually stays between around two hundred to about two fifty, two sixty, I suppose.
My, I just care, we made way over that. According to printout, you give me it was.
How much did it say?
Three hundred thousand.
No, you, you go back and you look, like last fiscal year, if you did not front it, figure out.
Maybe that's why.
I didn't see that again.
Now, that could have been what was right, it's not what we collect. If you know as well as I do, we might have somebody that got six and five years ago, who took their license and has paid for it. 'Cause you're right, last week was a good week, 'cause we had one kid, and I just started feeding a career, and paid all the rest, so he won his license.
Since we started, we're getting that, posting that up. Been for once more, they starting to pay this stuff up.
Yeah.
So, that's something else that, that's there. Well, we got that to thank the Mr. Paul.
Basically, uh, if you wanna cut it, that is, or if they're little, what they need to get is here. Where it's listed as fine, that's how much he pays, that much he will, you can kind of get a monthly cure.
So, do y'all wanna look over to see? I just like to get a number, so we can.
There's no doubt, I want it to happen.
I just wanna make sure that your budget can handle it. I want y'all to be killing yourselves for our tickets.
Well, that's the reason we're gonna do it right now, to get these people out.
I know, I understand that.
There's one other thing, if they're possibly looking at at the end of the year, that does not pay, their parts of two points cars are great, they apply.
But, we get two for price of one.
But, you still gotta come up with your part of the payment.
We just add a two hundred and thirty-fourth of a dollar budget. And this is just the second month, and we write the tickets after but.
You have to have the money in the bank to cover it. That'd be like us, meaning you a blank check and say, check, check, look and say, here.
Come on, you got, we sure can't write pogo sticks. You would've got the house something.
We know that.
I've been using my own vehicle every six months, use my own gas, I ain't that special for that.
Well, I mean, I agree, you know, I told you months ago, I felt like.
Me too.
Sure, and um, I think probably we all, just to get the.
Get an idea of how much.
The best number that we can get, you know, I don't wanna say right now, come through the law, and when we could get them to a thirty-four dollars.
I understand that, these people need to make, and that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I totally.
No more questions. Well, you, you're the assistant, I asked him, how much does he think he can, budget can carry?
I don't know how much it would come out to, you know what I'm saying? I don't know what he was asking for, or none of that.
Well, he's not, he didn't ask us, he just asked us for, you know, he hasn't asked for a specific. He just asked to get yours. So, we want to look at the, we just wanna know, we would like to see some numbers, 'cause we don't want y'all to end up a hole in the year, you know.
Yeah, that's the way the car are too. That's what you're talking about.
Well, we, I'm pretty sure we're all agree.
Um, since we're on cars, y'all are trying to get a backhoe, right?
Yeah, but we've been sitting our money aside every month for that backhoe. For two years, that's why none of us.
Y'all were in charge of our money. So much, take so much back, that's how you do that. Do the same way with y'all, like you, for us, all of y'all doing beyond backhoe.
Robert, how that money came about is, we put fifteen hundred dollars a month in escrow account, pay off silver plant, that comes about thirty-three thousand dollars a year. You have to have that money in, in the escrow account, so the note can do in all of them. Okay, the note was finally paid off. That money is, we moved it to an account to purchase a, a backhoe. Uh, we're still working the USDA, uh, so that's how, that didn't just pop up, is what I'm trying to say, thirty, forty something thousand, that didn't just pop up. So, it, it was been sales size for, was it a year and all of it, or two years?
Two years.
Two years, my.
Nothing's racist.
Two years, it's been, uh, uh, you know, this happened.
Y'all getting that money from all the bills, and now y'all collecting around town for this, or what?
It comes out sales tax. And, and the money y'all are getting, it's all.
No, no, that kind of comes out of the dill plant, because nothing to do with.
You, you tell the plant?
It's dill plant.
Okay, alright, I'll tell the plant. Yeah, that's the store report.
Well, like I said, y'all doing payrolls, if y'all can take out a penny here or any of that, we don't have control of it. Y'all does, y'all does.
Well, how much are y'all gonna have to spend on maybe coming in here?
It's, I wanna say it was fifty-five for both vehicles, and eleven to put the equipment on.
Fifty-five thousand?
Yeah, it's the price of, it's one, the price of one vehicle for both of them. I got, I got the, or, I think, you got a copy of it too, don't you?
When they come, they're gonna be coming fully equipped.
Yeah, we had light bars everywhere.
'Cause every time we been getting one in the past, we'd have taken up there and there, ten, twelve thousand dollars, with light bar, radio, and everything else.
So, that's fifty-five thousand.
That's for both vehicles, we just pay half.
And then what's the eleven thousand?
That's for all the lights and the sirens.
Radio.
An additional to the.
Yeah, but it's in the grant already.
Right, basically.
We put, we sent in a estimate of what it costs. I think it's fifty-five something altogether, I think, they're, they pay either, I wanna say she said either fifty percent of it, or seventy-five percent, right?
But we don't know that, sure.
Well, that's what the lady told.
That was a number that was thrown out when I called, and I talked to her.
Well, I'm saying.
Number that was thrown out.
And I understand that, but I'm saying, when I talked to her, the grant that we're applying for, they either paid seventy-five percent of the total cost, or fifty percent, whatever they, they allot for them.
Right, they, they paid one or the other.
Yeah, one or the other.
Were y'all, one or the other?
Yeah.
It's the federal government decides how much.
It's going down, but we can't get that.
That's what we're gonna do, that could.
We're not gonna get no seventy-five cent, 'cause, not what they tell us.
And we may not get seventy-five cent either, it's one or the other, is what the lady was telling us.
So, y'all looking either between, say sixteen, possibly thirty thousand, maybe?
Somewhere between there, altogether.
Is it be y'all or?
The way she explained to me, it's probably gonna be around seventeen, eighteen.
Right.
The way I understood the lady.
I'm gonna be honest with you, it's not bad.
No, not for two fully equipped, brand new units. That you don't have to waste all the repair money.
Is it, I'm just asking, 'cause I don't know nothing much about their budget. Is there somewhere where y'all have that amount y'all can set aside now?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know how the budget works, other than this is what you got for the year.
You could probably figure your budget for the year, you would have to take that money from somewhere to set it down.
Well, we cut out the overtime unless they're having to lock somebody up, which naturally ain't got no control over that whatsoever.
Well, no, you can't help that.
And when they get their vacation pays and all this stuff, you got to have somebody that's still in that slot, you just can't leave it free. That's the only way we can be able to do stuff like that. But we're not paying anybody unless it's a necessity. And somebody gets sick, I can't tell them, get your butt up here and go.
We know, we know, we understand.
I got to have somebody there to pay that man, take care of the family.
But you have, you have cut back on some of your overtime, right?
Yeah, well, it's no overtime, I can say it.
Okay.
Because he's making an effort to try to get his money, so it's worth it.
Okay.
We're not really, she's laying it right at him, like, till the end of the year, or next year?
Lady told me, we probably wouldn't even know about our grant until October, the end of October.
Right, 'cause they're physically doing it, they're physically.
Yeah, she said it'd be after that.
Without that though, about that, once it's kind of final out of them, they go to Washington.
That's where it's already right there now.
They, they start the new year in October.
Yeah, they gotta approve it up there.
Yeah, I mean, that's what she just told me.
That's what she told us, last time I talked to her, she said it was up there in Washington.
Okay, it's up there, and I didn't know it was up there.
Well, that's what she told me, they were up there looking at them, or whatever.
Look your map.
Are there any grants out there, look around here to help with salaries of police officers for small?
They getting the state supplemental right now, about a hundred dollars.
A lot of those grants, when you get them, they're good for a year, but the town has to agree after that year to continue their employment for another year.
That's the problem with those, they only last a.
You can get them, but they only last a year, and then you're stuck paying the extra officer's salary for the following year.
What about the tech home, do you, how many?
They can get real message to.
How good, I mean, the cost of that, is that staying pretty low, like, as far as fuel?
Well, this past month, it was a little high. But, we had two to three units going the whole time. That's the reason why there's a hundred and seventy-seven tickets. You're not gonna get tickets by sitting on the road and not doing that.
Two hundred and fifty-four tickets.
Two hundred and fifty-four tickets? If you don't get that.
The officer's taking the units home, instead of.
I got some paper right here, and he got. We had a lot of reserves, that was like, only one month's time.
They drove all.
That was one month. No, that's the tickets. If you don't get on the road, you don't get the tickets, and you don't get the money.
So, this has a big delay.
Well, like I said, we've had two and three officers working at the same time.
Well, I can say the state is working to try to get tickets paid, but they are working on it.
Well, we've had a lot of people paying them now, 'cause we've been picking them up at warrants.
Yes.
So, they're actually paying the tickets, 'cause they don't wanna get picked up.
Try to go my road, can I have it? Mine too.
The what?
Well, we know why yours are getting hot, and that's the reason I rode down there a while ago.
We know why yours are like that, well, I just raided their other house today. I got somebody sitting over there waiting to go to jail right now.
Well, in Thai, he, we had the truck on the side of the road in front of our house, that truck was there again when I headed up here, and I watched.
That's a Thompson boy.
And he come walking, must've ran out of gas, and he come walking with gas.
Half the time his truck not working, broken. He's got a motorcycle, too.
I know.
You know the purple house on Frank Street?
Yeah.
That's where he was with it. Till he went up there with him.
Matt, can we close my road? That's kind of seems what we.
They just have people to turn around in the yard.
Yeah, let's turn around.
I wish they would turn pay here, but once was.
Yeah.
Just let a good ranger one, like wash out something, 'cause that year, the prison washed out for about eight months. And now we're in hope to get this guy.
We didn't have, we got some new neighbors down there. Alright.
Yeah, all hours in that.
We need to.
You heard me there? Some of that shit's slow down tonight, 'cause two of them are there.
Is that what you're talking, you, you can't call a question, but, but for me, you know, if you wanna look out game, I don't, I'm a public or weak, what I'm gonna do, is to come back here and make the decision, that's up to the board to do that.
I mean, I would say.
That's absolutely a member of the board, that's making a call request for that. They have to make three or more of their requests right now.
Okay, I'd like to request that we have especially discussed salary issues, uh, after with Police Department, after we get the financial numbers that we need for Jennifer.
Can we say Monday, next Monday, sixteen?
I mean, that's up to the board, whether they're.
Let me just check my schedule.
Can we get it back? Can we get it back to you?
Can we do it like, say, six thirty, that way I ain't have to talk to God.
Y'all make no speeding tickets.
Y'all, y'all, you get one, that'll help everyone.
Robert, to give you a police.
I don't know, I'm hoping, no. I don't know about that, I don't know about that, he talking about my Democrats too damn much.
I have one more, I have a request for President Kyle Raine, need two more?
Yes, sir, I motion.
Okay, necessary, I missed page, okay.
So, we're gonna meet Monday, sixteen, to get a number.
Six thirty.
Jennifer's gonna get, uh, some numbers, so we can come out with some good figures.
You just tell me what you want.
Oh, that's it. At six thirty? And, uh, Robert, I think that's a good idea, what Sarah said, you put a salary. I mean, I, and you're starting salary.
Well, you know, lost them procedures, and you put it down there full time, starts out at this.
Yes, and, and walk back.
Like, y'all getting right now thirteen dollars, that's what they start out, and they don't get a pay raise, and that's.
Someone wanna put that in motion?
I'll make a motion.
Then you put that in the process.
Okay, 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 thank you.
That way they won't.
Now, no, great, Halloween, I know it's all on Thursday, but it's up to the board, you wanna either do it Saturday or do it Thursday, that's up to the board.
Well, we put it out there for the public, and they, they look, they want Thursday.
They want Thursday, Thursday's fine, what time?
Five, I say Thursday. Five, Thursday, now I think.
Yeah, it's dark.
You clean there. Yeah, I say six.
Five, I say six.
Six to eight at home, six to eight or six to eight.
Six to eight, eight, three, six to eight, three?
No, eight.
Six to eight, okay.
Make the motion, Halloween's, on Thursday.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, six o'clock, eight o'clock, P M.
Okay. I have a motion, it is made, I have a.
I say.
Certain, okay, all in favor? Alright, thank you.
Uh, historical design, I know, we can all just kind of do it together, like, we're just gonna pass out, and not have nothing. And they sell them there, we get some water, just be there, like, have it with y'all, maybe.
Oh, thanks.
Even like.
I just have a place to blow your hot coffee.
And then if people wanna do it at their homes, and.
And churches.
Well, now, with the pavies being messed up, what, what are we gonna do there?
Well, if it's messed up, we could do it on the.
What messed up?
The pavies down there. The pavilion down there.
What's messed up? I know about that, bad, it's staying, I know about that.
Are you still no chance? Because you know kids.
Yeah.
Kids don't run out of work.
I could have barricades.
We can do it at the fire station. I can hold the trucks out. Well, we got plug-ins there. And then Darryl would decorate the fire station. With smoke machines and all that.
Talking about Darryl, doesn't he want to take a match because he's paid less all year round?
Where, where are we gonna do it at?
Point by ourselves.
Fire station, fire station. At the fire station, uh, I'm here with thirty third from six to eight P M. Okay, number four, police ride along.
So only one that I read that we got from, is that the lawyer? Said, insurance said they must be sixteen of age, sixteen years of age, but ours said we're gonna do eighteen. And also says no like, no cell phone. I would possibly add in there smartwatches because you would be surprised what they can do with them things. I would not trust that they're not in their pocket. I would not trust them by saying, oh, I don't have anything. Like ask for them or something. That's just the teacher coming out there, video anything. So. Careful with that. You have tamers, so you gotta check. That was the only thing I seen there.
Well, I know they used to have it, and they signed a release form, it releases everything.
Well, but we don't want video stuff.
Oh, no, no.
That says there's gonna be evidence if they do, they're gonna lose their phone. I mean, that's what you would have to do if they recorded them, you'd have to make it for them. It wouldn't be wise for them to do that anyway.
I would suggest only allow with a code certified officer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe just certain ones y'all, until you kind of get it off the ground and, you know.
That's the only way we're gonna get the youth involved in law enforcement. They get done, you ride along, they say, this is fun, I want to do this for a living.
Well, I can tell you, you're gonna get some that's gonna do it because they just, they get it funny to do it. You're just a young person.
Chief, that week I have a special call meeting next Monday. Can you put a format out, right, what has been talking about here? Uh, no cell phone, uh, in the vehicles.
Smartwatches or any recording devices.
Case like that, we just take them and put them inside our glove boxes.
I might leave them in the office.
Well, yeah, they can do that too.
Just make them leave them in the office.
I would say it can be electronic. Yeah, well, that's what I mean, so they'll record. You can word it that way, no, um.
Well, I gave y'all the only copy of the one I had. I'll have to get another copy of it.
I can give you the original deck.
And it says, I think you typed yourself?
No, I got that from my Iowa police department.
Okay, so where it says participant will not be a musician of a cell phone and or camera video or still, I would include electronic devices. Which would cover your smartwatches, your iPads, your pens, anything of that nature. And you may include, you know, it would be logged.
Security. They can either leave it in their car or leave it in the office. I would prefer them have to lock the security in their own vehicle.
Then you don't have to.
Then I'm not as.
Just make sure you look at that watch, you know. Because if they need to, there's a family emergency.
Most of the only people that have asked to ride along has been criminal justice students because they're required to get so many hours to ride along for their degree.
Just Ryan. There's some ladies that would like to.
Come on with it.
But I don't.
Get them. I'm by all the council members, they're gonna ride with me when I'm working. Come on over there and get in.
I have enough of that already, hey? I see in that New York work hours.
I did that in New Lando, and one of the councilmen's wrote for me for about an hour. She made me bring her home, and the next council meeting, they gave us a three dollar hour raise.
Two and three at a time, come on now.
But that, that really happened, like it was.
But you drive down to Waltham, like you.
Oh, she rode on the wrong night, really.
Y'all know, I don't have, I already know.
Yeah, you might. It was a bad night for her. She didn't get, she wanted out of there.
So I'm gonna make a motion that revisions be made, outline of ride along, and, uh, well, that's next Monday, sign of special call meeting. We can have two, we can have two special meetings, right? No, I have the special call meeting, you have two.
Well, just have it.
We can have three. Yeah, you can have three separate.
So you just need for me to ride along, babe? You need me to get that ride along thing fixed for you?
Yeah, I need a motion on that.
Make a motion that, uh, we look at the ride along program with revisions that were suggested by the council and everything, and the special, next call special meeting next month.
Six thirty, six thirty. Okay. Now, second, now. Okay, now, okay, now we have a request.
Um, I just had a request to, um, be removed as commissioner or trailer, trailer commissioner because there's been, I know of five brought in and I haven't, I did receive one, but it was already moved in Maryville, so, um, maybe it's something else that I can. And Mary, you said you didn't know the, well, don't they have to come get water and sewer and all that? That's how we usually kind of get it after the trailer part here. So then tell them you not giving them water and sewer.
Can't they buy them if they move it in here without?
Well, I know, Miss Craster was up here, they had a double wide moving in down there on Brown Street, and she made her move it.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, they do it because they know they can. I mean, so. We might need to write it ordinance to.
She also running all lines down in Ditches.
One came in. That's hard for you, and then after that, I don't know what.
That thing was forward. The only one I got. But it was already moved in.
No, no, this one isn't. Well, she may have been in, but we, all I got was a picture of it.
Well, the one I'm talking to Jennifer about that was right here, it was like literally they called the paper one day.
Yeah, the highway was theirs.
Yeah.
And they ran back and I don't know what, and I look. I didn't even hear from the property. My picture's on the stand very well. That back there was Miss Jennifer, and you, what if they might send you for they moving in and that thing?
Well, we should be giving them water and sewer again. Or, that's fine. Then we give the money to the police. Yeah, we're right. Well, that's one thing is, do we need to look at that mobile home? Well, I mean. Because it must be underpinned, and I don't. And the ones that are coming in, right here in the middle of town, and I would like to clean the town up, and that's not helping clean the town up.
Yeah, you been by there?
Plus, we need to make sure.
They have cleaned that lot up.
Don't, not here on the corner?
Uh-huh, they have cleaned that lot up.
Yeah, it was a ticket.
Yeah, they have, they.
Well, my question is, is, uh. My thing is, if it says, we use it to do something about that. The, if we need a riding ordinance on that saying, okay, you've got to come do this, or here, and get fined on this one, or you have to, you have to move it.
Well, what's gonna happen is they're gonna say, um, they didn't know, and to me ignorance is not an excuse for law.
I had a judge tell me that.
It's not an excuse because, well, we know the law now. You still won't have to pay the fine.
But in most places, they have to go to city hall and get a permit.
Right, that's what I'm.
So before they can do it.
Most, most, most.
Most of the time. And a lot of them, if they don't do that, they will receive a pretty hefty ticket or have to load it back up to the battery.
Cause I thought that was in. I know it's a presser like Robert said, because somebody had pulled one in one time, and they pulled it right back out when she.
It was already set up?
Before you even sign it, Paige, would you look at that and make notes on it? Yeah, I can copy of it. I'll have to go back and look. I still have mine on.
And then another thing, when they come in, I don't know who come in, you know, connecting to water, I don't look at all the water bills, you know, who's late and all that's blocked out. You put in there to let Miss Debbie or Miss Jennifer, when they come in there to let them know what they're doing, and worth asking, where, where are you moving? What are you bringing in down? What are you doing? And then say, no, you gotta go to, um, law measure, third, to get a permit for it.
That's what I, I don't know this for sure. That one on three eighty-nine, it looks like a camper trailer. Where's that one? Was, had been set in there.
Have they got a double wide down there?
Yeah, and so if they have a camper trailer there.
Probably already got one.
That I'm missing, they already got one. A camper trailer, right?
Yeah, that camper trailer was there yesterday.
I make a motion, we look at the ordinance, or if it's the ordinance, and we need to, we need to look at it. So I have to say it like that? I'll make a motion that we look at the mobile home commissioner, the ordinance, and we look at making a fine for people that don't come before and.
Did she withdraw her request?
And I may withdraw. I will withdraw my request until we can, uh, read that and see what we can come up with.
Where's all these trailers located at? I know that one down here.
There's one here, there's a double wide, Nicole Perkins moved one in.
Where's hers at?
Brown.
I ain't seen that one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go about there.
Now, hers is new, though. Hers is the only one that was new.
But they should kind of.
No, 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 they.
Down on Second Street, Steel Street, there's a new one down there.
The armor, yes.
I did say a picture on that one, did you?
Well, it's brand new. It don't matter, they're still supposed to do.
When they came in, it was already being delivered, and they want us to go put the water, we told them then if they didn't bring any kind of paperwork, that their workers were stressed or over, we didn't know.
But that's where you make the change at all and stuff, when they come in like that.
Now, they pulled over by the car, I would say, oh, I didn't know that, I would just say.
That's not his plan.
Find out then, that's somebody.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they need to come in.
I, Miss Sarah made a motion, I have a second, I don't favor that.
I'd like to hear it repeated word for word what she said.
I don't know.
Now we have public participation. This is your turn to talk.
I know the same thing, I'm sorry, fix it, you're so right. Uh, you know, I think we need to commend the people that put manual key on this town. This town looks so nice. They're always out, they're always riding those lawnmowers, and there's so many golfers die, boots broke this weekend. I admire them, and I think, I just love Maryville, it's kept up so nicely, because to me, it looks really nice, it's on my favorite grass, but anyway. I just say, Paige, I just wanted to say that I can't.
We all agree, and not in response to that, but what I'm bringing up was, it was my understanding that with the gate left, the, the road locked off on Weaver, that the city was going to maintain that streets still, since they did not abandon it, and it has not been maintained.
Can I address that, Paige?
Yeah, Sarah, most people.
Okay, we have, uh, I don't know if you noticed, laying up there against the trees that showed up here today, is the, the gate that's gonna have a key that certain people have access to the lock and everything. That's the gate that's laying there, and we're waiting till probably start over tomorrow. But when we take down the old barricade, or we got it down, that's where we're gonna clean those roadways outside, clean the trees and the top, everything. We're not gonna touch a lot of those bushes that are on, uh, Mr. Williamson's property because those bushes are growing in there where it's gonna eliminate those cars that they chase of going through. And Mr. Williamson's has agreed to put up a barricade on his property to keep people from driving around it. It will have wheelchair access, walking access to get through, and, uh, bicycle access to get through. That'll be started tomorrow.
Okay, that'll be here then. What about the, the lights? The lights are out on, there's, there was a pole on each end, and there's no lights shining up each end.
I feel like you owe for Miss Gail Keel, you got no problem.
All we have to do is be notified of that. I asked Chief Thompson before, his office is right around the night, and say one out. Most of them have a brass tag on the pole.
Well, they're not coming down the street. They're not coming down our street.
But if you, if you call the office and say it's out, somebody go by, look at it, and we'll call you.
I don't know if that, I didn't know if that's my job to do that.
You can do it.
It's not really your job to do that, so I'll, well, I'll pray that you just call a police call.
And just let them.
And then let them go get the number off of it, and then they let us know, we'll call the police.
One on each end, and there was one down by the. Passes up. And one down the other. And I really didn't notice it that much, but my mother-in-law being there and lots coming with people around, but now it's so dark out there. It's like, what happened to those lines? I can't go with it, so I'm.
I'd like to commend one of my officers. He saved a man's life Saturday or Sunday, if I knew what. They had to drown him up there on Mount Creek Road. There were sheriff's deputies standing around. This man was out there drowning. He took it upon his own self, stripped down, and went out there and poured that man's safety. I'd like to commend him.
And then yesterday in, uh. Y'all heard about Officer Harris and Ty?
Yep, Ty was hurt, hit him also.
And then yesterday in the seniors department, there was a woman with no pulse, wasn't breathing, and Ty gave her CPR and barbed wire.
I have had several good, um, comments about Ty. He, uh, he came and helped my husband, and my husband said, do you know that officer Ty? I said, yeah, and he was very pleased with him, and so hopefully we can keep him.
He's a certified E T too.
I know, I know.
So that's been, that's a sure.
But he not go to the academy till January, then he'll be certified and everything. So that'd be money saved also for being.
When you're writing that salary, you may put something in there about, I love the academy. You said stay two years, if we change that, then still one. Yeah, you could do that. You could require them to stay two years, and that is what you want. Uh, maybe even once you complete the academy, you know, to get a raise.
I think they do, I don't think they want.
Well, they get that from the state, you know.
No, they gotta be a year before they get this supplement.
Don't, don't y'all get one when they graduate to academy?
Oh, I thought they started out at morning. My list card had a thirteen dollars.
We don't have a place.
Larson Act that says that the raises have to be approved.
Yeah, they're still helping, it's still bringing people. Right, make a request or whatever.
I did want to mention there, because I don't know if you remember what we was talking about, about the contempt of court ordinance. After I talked with, uh, Wayne and them, they do think we need to get one put in for that situation where you can, we can hold them in contempt and charge them with a fine for being in contempt of court.
I thought you also have said that SB and RS code. I thought you also have said that that's be an RS code, does that have to be in there?
No, just the ordinance for contempt of court.
That's...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
No, RS codes was the criminal law for issuing this to me or someone.
I thought that's what, you know, we went through Mr. Farley, last month, and that's what he, that he didn't go to the register?
No.
We didn't know.
But we were good on that, according to Jim LaStiles and Wayne Bush.
Didn't matter, that was...
Yeah. Well, we can actually like the simple battery tickets that they issued, where about, said, do they think we can do that? Jim LaStiles and Wayne Bush said, yeah, we can, we just have to set the fine below five hundred dollars, because we can't see anything with a fine higher than five hundred dollars. So, even though there's not one set, she can actually set one according to the statute, if it says minimum of five hundred, she can set it anywhere from a dollar to five hundred.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion, be, oh, oh?
They still up there with her?
No, they're over there typing there.
Oh, okay.
Supplements for my board. You have to talk to Debbie about that, she's supposed to be playing it off just for me, that's what she said. Debbie mentioned that to me yesterday. Uh, maybe leave it, she get her metal boxes?